Imi de puente noebi, na le sertura Guam is now in order, Senator Vice Speaker Ray Tenorio.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that the Agenda of September sixth, two thousand and seven be adopted.
Okay, no objection. Motion carries. Senator Jimmy Espaldon, can you please lead the body for a prayer?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Heavenly Father, we come before you today and ask for your guidance as we undertake the people's business. We ask you to guide our thoughts, we ask you to guide our words, we ask you to guide our very beings so that we act in the best interest, as we've been elected to do, of the people. Heavenly Father, we also ask you to protect our island, to guide us as we move into some uncharted territory. And as we move forward, we ask that you protect us and create us in how you want us to be. We give you thanks for all that we have, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. And if I may add, I would like to add a special prayer for our Speaker, Mark Forbes, that Lord, that you be with him, you console his family, and you guide his health so that he may come back and serve the people as he was elected to do. We give you thanks, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Will our Chairman of the Committee on Health, please lead the Guam? Excuse me, education, education. Okay, if the clerk will do the roll call, please. Senator Blas? Speaker Cau?
Here.
Senator Spaldon? Senator Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthardts? Senator Shizaki? Senator Luhad? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Speaker Panglinen? Senator Esposito? Senator Shimuson? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Pinko? Senator Wampin? Senator Panglinen?
Here.
Mr. Speaker, would you report there is a call? Thank you very much. Senator Tenorio?
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Legislative Journal of August sixteenth, oh seven, to August twenty seventh, oh seven be approved.
Okay, no objection. On communications petitions, Senator Tenorio?
Mr. Speaker, there are communications and petitions. I move that they be considered to have been read and also be appended to today's Legislative Journal.
The agenda has been adopted. On messages from Imogen Lahit, Senator Tenorio?
Mr. Speaker, there are messages from the Governor. I move that they be considered to have been read and also be appended to today's Legislative Journal.
On reports from select committees?
Standing committee.
Oh, standing committees, excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, there are also reports of standing committees. I also move that they be considered to have been read and also be appended to today's Legislative Journal.
On reports from select committees?
Um, there are none.
On the introduction of first reading of bills and resolutions, Senator Tenorio?
Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill number one six five E.C. to Bill number one six eight E.C. be considered to have been introduced and also received their first reading.
No objections. Senator Tenorio?
Mr. Speaker, I move that all resolutions and certificates of commensory, congratulatory, condolences nature be adopted by the body, that all names of the sponsors include the members of legislature, and the legal counsel be authorized to make such necessary technical corrections.
No objection. Senator Tenorio, motions.
No, not for the motions at this time.
No motions at this time? Oh, Senator Panglinen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move that notwithstanding the override of the Governor, veto Bill one forty-nine be placed down in the voting file. Now, now we stand in the objection of the Governor. Already, Mr. Tenorio, did you get that?
Please continue, Senator Panglinen.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, I would like to move that vetoed Bill one forty-nine, notwithstanding the objections of the Governor, be placed in the voting file for the purpose of an override.
If there's no objection?
I'd like to speak on the motion, Mr. Speaker.
Please continue, Senator Panglinen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the Governor, as you know, vetoed Bill one forty-nine, and I wanted to just address a couple of issues so that everybody in the body has a sense of comfort in acting on this override. As we all know, the issue of Bill one forty-nine provides an additional ten million dollars in the form of the assignment of a debt that is owed by GTA or Tele Guam Holdings in their purchase of the Government of Guam, Guam Telephone Authority. They have already paid the Government of Guam approximately a hundred and forty million dollars for the sale, or for their purchase. As part of the sale, they assigned a promissory note of approximately ten million dollars, which they pay an interest on and which will mature in two thousand and thirteen. Now, Bill one forty-nine assigns the government's right to that promissory note and to the payment that will be made to the Government of Guam upon the maturity of the... Is there... Upon the maturity of that note, assigns that right to that note to the class of the COLA retirees pursuant to the court judgment so that cash can be made available to help make partial payments on that COLA judgment. Now, Bill one forty-nine outlines, of course, that assignment, that the Director of Administration, the Attorney General, the Director of the Retirement Fund, and the Class Counsel would work together on liquidating this note and therefore making the cash available to be distributed out. And it sets up the distribution methodology. In addition, Bill one forty-nine, Mr. Speaker, which is probably of the more urgent nature at this time, sets out on how to deal with survivors of COLA class recipients who have passed away, of the retirees who have passed away, and how that distribution will occur. We all know that the Governor finally, pursuant to authority given to him by this body in the past legislature, when he took out nine million dollars from the various funds that were authorized by this body in twenty-eight one fifty-one, when he took out nine million dollars last year and he didn't tell anybody. He only told the bank that he wanted the money pursuant to authority granted to him by this body for the purpose of making the COLA judgment awards. But he kept it quiet, didn't tell anybody he took the money. What's even more distressing, he didn't even pay the COLA judgment award, Mr. Speaker. In February of this year, Mr. Speaker, upon my reelection or my election to this body, I started to question, where is the money that was authorized by the twenty-eighth Guam Legislature that they promised the Administration and all their representatives during the committee of a whole here in the discussion of Bill twenty-eight one fifty-one? Where is the money that was made available? And the Administration representatives, to our face at a public hearing in which you conducted, Mr. Speaker, said, "There is no money." We told the legislature that there may not be money, that we may need this money to complete the projects, so there is no money, we took no money. I wasn't satisfied with that, Mr. Speaker. I didn't believe them, number one, but I wasn't satisfied with that. And they continued to insist that they took no money, that there was no money. So I filed a Freedom of, I first asked politely four, five times, "Can you tell us what are the balances in these accounts that the twenty-eighth Guam Legislature authorized you to take money off? What was the balance when you authorized them, and what's the balance today?" Lo and behold, we found that there was money taken out, but they continued to deny that the money was taken out. So we finally dug some more. When they wouldn't respond nicely, we filed, I filed a Freedom of Information Act. And I requested, "Give me the documents for any money that was taken out of these accounts." And they continued to say, "We don't have the money, we never took the money, there is no money." I continued digging, Mr. Speaker, from February to almost April and May. And finally, right around June, after repeated attempts and asking for different types of documents, we finally found the documents with the Governor's signature certifying to the banks, the trust accounts in those banks, that he in fact was asking for four million dollars to be released. Four million from the Tourist Highway Construction Fund and four million from the Tourist Attraction Fund Construction Fund. In there, in writing, with a Governor's signature and the Director of Administration and the Director of Public Works, they certified that there was excess money in those accounts and that they wanted that money to be released because the Governor was going to pay the COLA judgment award pursuant to twenty-eight one fifty-one authorized by this body. Up until that day, the Governor and his Administration continued to deny that they took the money, Mr. Speaker. That's what's most hurtful about this whole process, is that they promised that the money was there in October, in November, in December. They promised, they said it was. They had the money, they took it, and they continued to deny the fact that they took the money. Until we found the document with the Governor's signature and we found the deposit slips. And so, Mr. Speaker, upon discovering that, I sent a letter to the Attorney General. And I said, "Isn't this against the law? Shouldn't the Governor do one of two things? If he indeed took that money out pursuant to the authority granted to him by the twenty-eighth Guam Legislature in twenty-eight one fifty-one?" Finally, the Attorney General issued a letter that says, "You've got two choices. You either pay the money or you return it." And you know what's even worse, Mr. Speaker? They tried to hold back the audits of the fund to make sure that they could return the money. But they trapped themselves, Mr. Speaker, because they already certified that the money was excess. So if they were going to return the money, the Governor, if the Governor could have returned that money, he would have returned that money and not paid the retirees, but he got too smart and he trapped himself because he certified that the money was excess. So if he now certifies that the money is not excess and they need it, then he must have lied when he said there was excess, back in November when he took it out. So I guess he only wanted to lie once. And he was gonna stick with it, that the money was excess. And that's why, Mr. Speaker, we had those checks going out. And I still say that we're short because the money, the Governor took nine million instead of eight million, and he's only going to pay out eight million. There's still a million dollars missing. And the Attorney General needs to get on what the Governor needs to do with that money. That also needs to be calculated and figured in the distribution. Because the taking of that money was the same authority as taking the money from the other two accounts. And if he had no choice but to pay it out, then that million should also be credited for payment out to the retirees. And so, Mr. Speaker, that's why we have the distribution of the checks. But, Mr. Speaker, the way that the distribution of the checks occurred is only half of the eight million has been distributed because the other half are going to go to the survivors of these annuitants and part of the retiree class because they have passed away. And they can't distribute it according to the Retirement Fund and according to the Department of Administration because of a conflict in the law on who gets it and how it's going to be distributed. And Bill one forty-nine is a, part of Bill one forty-nine contains the distribution of the COLA to those survivors of the retirees that were survivors after the COLA award. Because if they were survivors during the COLA years, there's no problem. But it's being a survivor before or after, there's a discrepancy on who gets it. And the Bill, in Bill one forty-nine, is a bill that we worked out with the Retirement Fund, that it will treat it now so that whoever is getting the annuity check today as a survivor, whether or not they became a survivor after nineteen ninety-five or before nineteen ninety, then they get the COLA awards. And if they don't get it, if they're not, if they have passed on, then it goes to the beneficiary. So it speeds up that four million that is supposed to be in this trust account. And Bill one forty-nine sets up the methodology of doing that. And as you witnessed, Mr. Speaker, yesterday during the meeting, Ms. Blas of the Retirement Fund said that if we override this bill and it goes into law today, then the Retirement Fund can distribute that four million dollars to these individuals who are just as destitute, maybe, if that's a good, it's a right word, but it's not a good word, to describe the condition of some of these retirees. And that's exactly some of the conditions they are. But they can get whatever is owed to them out of the eight million dollar distribution sometime next week. So we really need to do this, Mr. Speaker, and I'm asking my body. Now, the one objection that the Governor has is that there may be, we can't assign it without mutual consent. Mr. Speaker, we knew that. We know that the final assignment is going to be when the Governor signs those documents, that the Attorney General prepares according to the law. And we spoke, both you and I, in different occasions, spoke with the General Manager of GTA. And this is his comment, Mr. Speaker, with regards to the assignment of this. His comment, Mr. Speaker, is very simple. And I thank him for his willingness to work with this government on behalf of the retirees. We would respond favorably on a transfer of the GTA sub-debt obligation to GovGuam to interested parties. They have no problem with working with us on the final assignment of that debt when the papers are signed and therefore the note is assigned to the retiree class. So, Mr. Speaker, that was the one major glitch that the Governor said is a problem, and it's not a problem according to the other party in this debt instrument. So there you have it, Mr. Speaker, of why I think it's really urgent that we do this bill, we override it, and we vote on it, you know, before the conclusion of our session so that we can get these retirees their checks, those who have been waiting just as long as, and who needed just as much of those who have gotten it in the last few days. So I thank my good colleagues for their consideration, Mr. Speaker. And I would like to, of course, place the bill in the voting file. And then I'd like to also make another motion after we finish with the vote on that motion.
Okay, again, on the motion by the Senator to move veto Bill one forty-nine into the voting file. Are there any other further speakers? If there are no other further speakers, if there is any objection, motion carries. Senator Panglinen?
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to change the order of the business to allow the body to proceed to the voting file either at the conclusion of, either we can do it now, Mr. Speaker, or at the end of the day, to vote on the override of vetoed Bill one forty-nine and then proceed back up to our current position on the session agenda. So, can I just make a motion?
Sure, there's a, this is a motion that would be, again, would require ten votes. If there was an objection to the, to the...
Right, if there's an objection.
I do know, I know the senior Senator, uh, Pico.
The double the second reading files were voted, so we will not end on the committee of the whole. So your motion now would have to actually just go down and vote and come back.
Right. So my motion, Mr. Speaker, would be for the body to proceed to the voting file, to vote on this bill, and then return to motions.
Okay. On the motion made by Senator Panglinen? If there's no objection? On the motion? Are you speaking on the motion? We're gonna be back in motions. Okay, and if there's no objection? No objection. Motion carries. We are still in motions, but, so I do have... Actually, we've gone about to the voting file. After this has been dispensed with, we will be going. Yes. So again, I guess we're gonna have to roll. Okay. On the matters of vetoed Bill one forty-nine, E.C., and notwithstanding the objections of Imogen Lahit of Guam, there is a call for the vote. Should the Legislature override the veto of the Governor? And with that, we will have the vote, clerk?
Vetoed Bill number one four nine E.C. as amended by the Committee on Finance, Next Nation Commerce, and Economic Development introduced by V.C. Panglinen, Everett J.B. Cavill, Frank F. Blas Jr., and others. An act to assign the ten million dollars, ten million dollar promissory note issued by Tele Guam Holdings LLC as part of the GTSL proceeds to pay the COLA judgment award pursuant to Superior Court S.P. zero two zero six dash ninety-three and Public Law twenty-eight dash one fifty-one.
Roll call? Senator Blas? Speaker Cavill?
Aye.
Senator Spaldon?
Yes.
Speaker Forbes? Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Shizaki? Senator Luhad?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Again.
Senator Palacios? Speaker Panglinen? Senator Esposito? Senator Shimuson? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Pinko? Senator Wampin? Senator Blas? Senator Shizaki? On the vote to override Bill one forty-nine as vetoed by, E.C. as vetoed by the Governor, there are thirteen yays, one absenteeism, and one out during roll call. So it's thirteen votes aye.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker?
Actually, it would be, there would be three passes on fine. Yes. Thirteen.
A point of order, Mr. Speaker, before you announce the final decision?
Yes, Senator Esposito.
I rise in a point of order. I believe that one member is actually present, and if he's outside of the room at the time, I think that a motion is in order to excuse him or compel him to come back to vote.
I'm taking it, I'm taking it, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
One minute recess.
Mr. Chair, you already announced the vote.
There was, there needs to be a correction on the numbers on count, so I'm going to reiterate the voting count.
Point of order, point of order? Point of order, point of order, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Senator, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for recognizing me. We, I raised a point of order because one member did not have an opportunity to vote on whether or not we should override the Governor's veto. And you began to, before you proceeded to announce the vote, I asked that we give that member an opportunity or entertain a motion to excuse him. And I understand the gentleman is back, and I think he should be given the opportunity to vote on this bill. Or to vote on the motion.
Thank you very much. Duly noted. There is a count. There are twelve yays in favor of the override on Veto Bill 149 E.C. Two nays. And one absenteeism. Veto Bill 149 E.C. Has been overridden. Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I just would like to make it clear for the record. I may, I move that Speaker Mark Forrest be excused from this proceedings for obvious medical reasons. I don't think the actual motion was made, so can we please let the record reflect that he is excused, absent?
There's no objection. On motions, Senator Luhon.
Thank you, Mr.
It's working?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place Veto Bill Number 68 E.C. Notwithstanding the objections of the Governor in the third reading file for the purposes of an override, I would like to speak on that. Motion, please.
Okay, on the motion, notwithstanding the objections of Imagulah Guan on Veto Bill Number 68 E.C. on the voting file for override, is there any other speakers wishing to speak? Senator Iijizaki? Oh, would you care to speak, please?
Yes, yes, I would.
Please, my apologies, Senator Luhon, Senator Luhon.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, I want to thank the body first of all for passage of Bill 68 E.C. I want to also thank the Governor for his message and his quick actions on the bill. Although it's not to the satisfaction of myself as the author of the bill and yourself as the co-author of the bill and to the COLA recipients. But enacting in a, in a... In a matter that was able to get this bill back to this body for further action. You know, Mr. Speaker, I read the Governor's veto message. And, you know, what I succumbed to in the reading of this message is that the Governor just doesn't want to pay this COLA out. You know, he cites, Guam Code annotated already, 5GCA subsection 22415, that allows for promissory notes to be issued at this point. He's saying that this process now is a problem. It's a problem because we're gonna have to pay COLA recipients in a form of certificate. It's not a problem when we owe vendors and they go up and offset their taxes at Rev and Tax. Why is it that if our Manomkus are owed money, it's a problem for them? Yet when we owe vendors money, the government gets into a contract with the government, and the government has no money to pay, they offset them in a promissory note to go and offset their taxes. Mr. Speaker, how many of our Manomkus right now do we have or do we know that are maybe issued letters from Rev and Tax and maybe their properties are gonna be taken away because of non-payment in the past couple of years? They owe the government. The government wants to take their properties away. How many of them are COLA recipients that are able with this certificate or promissory note to be able to offset that? And delay or even be able to salvage their properties? When government owes, they need to collect. I mean, yeah, when people owe, the government needs to collect. When the government owes, never mind, we can offset it, it's a problem. You know, it also says that, it's something, again, Mr. Speaker, that's already in law. Even the Governor citing the fact that 5GCA subsection 22415 allows this. This is a debt, this is a judgment that came down from the courts already. You owe this, you gotta pay it. Governor, you have to pay this. He's afraid that all these COLA recipients are gonna go redeem it because it's their money. He's scared that our Manomkus that are owed this judgment are gonna redeem their money. He also says that he is afraid that the Manomkus, the COLA recipients, are gonna sell it for pennies on the dollar. You know, listening to the COLA recipients last night, the Manomkus last night, they were insulted by the fact that this message sends them a message that the Manomkus don't know any better. That they'll redeem it for less than what it's worth. Mr. Speaker, they receive retirement checks now. Does the Governor, every time that they issue checks out, is he out there and say, "I'm worried on how you're gonna spend your check. You might not pay your bills. I shouldn't issue you a check because I'm afraid that you might misspend it and you might not pay your bills." That's what he's saying. He's saying that he's worried about fraud and theft. There's laws against that, there's laws against fraud and theft. Every time you issue them their retirement checks, you should be worried about fraud and theft. So what happens if somebody takes a COLA recipient's check and signs off on it? Fraudulently signs off on it? There's laws, there are laws against that, Mr. Speaker. He's afraid that there might be counterfeits. Might be counterfeit notes. Last I read, last I heard, there are laws against counterfeits as well. There's been talk about, what if their typhoon and the notes blow? Well, you go to DOA and tell them, "My notes blow, this is the number that you issued to me, and you have to nullify that number and issue me another note." What happens when the COLA, or the, I'm sorry, if someone loses their check, their paper check? They report it. They get the number. See if it's cashed already, and they issue them another check. There are rules and regulations that govern that already, Mr. Speaker. These are plain excuses, again, not to pay the COLA recipients. Again, it's a judgment, it's a debt that you have to pay out. You owe these people money. You owe them their money, give it to them. Do not insult these people by saying, "I'm afraid that you're gonna sell it for pennies on the dollar." And you don't speak, Mr. Speaker, if they do do that, it's their money. If they, if you give them their check and they don't want to pay their bills, they want to give it to their kids and not spend a dime on themselves, are you and I gonna go out there and stop them and say, "Don't do that"? That's their hard-earned cash, Mr. Speaker. We don't tell people what to do with their money. Not in American democracy system, Mr. Speaker. We encourage them not to do that. We encourage every person that receives a check that you pay your bills. Get a food in the house for your family, you pay what is needed to live. But if they decide otherwise, it's their money. It's their money. Quit coming up with excuses why you don't want to pay them. It might be counterfeited, it might be stolen, it might be lost, it might, they might fraudulently do this. Those all are excuses because that can apply right now as you issue checks to these COLA recipients. Paper checks can be fraud, can be fraudulently signed, can be counterfeited as well. There are laws against that, Mr. Speaker. People have gone to jail because they have signed on the line that, whose checks, someone else's checks they've signed. People have gone to jail for that, and they will continue to go to jail for fraudulent or counterfeit, Mr. Speaker. If they do the same things, they will go to jail as well. But it's only a problem when we owe vendors and we give them promissory notes, as stated, again, in 5GCA. That's all we're saying, is continue to adhere to the law on 5GCA. They're already allowed to issue these notes, Mr. Speaker. They're already allowed by law to do this. It's not backed up by money, Mr. Speaker. If they go out there, if the government is efficient in its operation and cuts down costs, we'll be able to pay this off in about three, four to five years, Mr. Speaker. The government must do its due diligence to quit wasting and be efficient, more efficient in its operation to pay its debt off. This is a debt, Mr. Speaker. That has to be, once and for all, settled and paid and quit treating these people again when it comes to the COLA recipients, that you treat them like they don't know what they're doing, they don't know what to do with their money. So, Mr. Speaker, with that, again, I want to thank this body for, again, passing Bill 68 and the Governor, again, for the matter in which he was able to expedite the process to be able to bring this, again, these two bills before this body. And with that, it's democracy at work, and I look forward to the support of my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion to place Veto Bill 68 on the voting file, Senator Iijizaki.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, it's hard to argue against paying our bills, it's hard to argue against giving our COLA recipients what is owed to them. What is difficult to do is argue for phony money. You know, I did object to 149 because there's some minor problems with it, but there is money behind 149. There is no money behind Bill 68, and that's why I call it funny money. We're not in the business of printing money. And typhoon risk and fire and counterfeiting wise, those are a few risks, but they're not the major risk I'm worried about. I'm worried about what is Tan Maria, Tan Makin gonna get? When these notes, we don't know the value of these notes. Are they gonna be worth 10 cents on the dollar, 20 cents on the dollar? They're gonna get shorted. If we owe a COLA recipient, Tan Makin, Tan Maria, $20,000, $30,000, we should give them all that we owe them. With phony money, this promissory note that's got no money behind it, it's gonna be sold discounted. So they're only gonna get pennies on the dollar. They're gonna be shorted, and who else is gonna be shorted? Our government revenue is gonna be severely shorted. If we issue $120 million in promissory notes and all of them are cashed in, bartered and sold in the open market, and there are people who will buy them, and I'll get to that. If they're bartered and sold in the open market and then submitted for, to offset revenues that this government should be collecting, what is gonna happen is, is we're gonna lose that revenue for this government. This government will not be able to operate if we're $123 million short in revenue. Mr. Speaker, you know yourself that this past, this current fiscal year, we were severely worried about a shortfall of $21 million. And fortunately, Revenue Tax came up with a magic solution to immediately offset revenue losses that was risking potential furloughs of our employees and risking the operation of this government. With the loss of $123 million in cash for this government, how is our government gonna run and operate and serve our people? It's not. You think $21 million is short? How about $123 million? That's a severe shortage we cannot afford. So who is gonna make the money? I'll tell you who's gonna make the money. The people who have tax obligations of significant amounts are gonna be the ones who will benefit. If you have a company or individuals who pay $1 million, $10 million in taxes, in GRT and corporate income tax and individual income tax, they can use these notes and pay off their tax obligation for this coming year for a lot less than what our government should be collecting. So you get Tan Maria getting shorted, our government getting shorted, and the people in the middle, the people who are gonna be buying the notes to broker them, to resell them so that businesspeople who have a high tax liability can cash them in and clear their tax obligations for almost nothing. That is the risk. It is not the counterfeiting risk, it is not the loss of typhoon and fire. You know, these are the less incidental risk factors. Issuing money without, issuing promissory notes without money, it's a severe risk. Is there a better way? I preach there is a better way, and I congratulate Senator Dave Shimizu for his introduction of Bill 168. I believe that's a better solution. We can leverage our total capabilities, government's ability to borrow money in a very competitive market at much lower interest rates and be able to pay the bills that we owe. So I propose that we do not override 68 and come out with a better solution. And I am a supporter of 168, and I reject an override on Bill 68. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Iijizaki. Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in addition to what the previous speaker had stated, based on information, I believe that Bill 68, I mean, Bill 68 is not necessarily a dish time. Go ask Attorney Mike Phillips. It can be done now without Bill 68. People can go and claim and get some kind of certificate in lieu of what they are owed. You know, Mr. Speaker, I'm very encouraged by the support despite my voting no on the override on Bill 149, and I will vote no on Bill 68. I'm very encouraged by the enthusiasm and what appears to be a very, very strong support to pay the COLA. And you know why? I am one of five Democrats that just signed the Bill 168, which is really the big package. That one is the serious one. I support paying all these debts, but let's pay lump sum, and it can be done. It can be done. Now, I'd like to see those that supported the override support 168. Let's pay off the COLA, the so-called Lola COLA, $123 million. Now, I think it's about, what, $118 million or, it's less than that now. Bill 168 will pay off not just the Lola COLA, will pay off the EITC, and it will pay off all the tax refund. That is the serious thing. This $10 million, $10 million, I mean, fine if that is the only way. But there is a better way. And in fact, today, we're gonna deal with that, with providing, rather granting the Governor an authorization to borrow in this budget Bill 143. I'd like to see those people that voted for the override vote to authorize the Governor to borrow and pay off these debts to the people of Guam. That's how you do it, that's how it should be done, that's how I'll do it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios, on Veto Bill Number 68. Senator Rispisio.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm probably gonna have to do one of the most difficult things by far in having to explain how I voted for the bill and to rise today and state my oppositions to the override. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, I've always been fascinated with one significant portion of this legislative process where the legislature, by minimum of eight votes, can pass a bill, and then we leave it up to the executive branch to deliberate up to 10 days and then either sign it into law or submit that bill back to the legislature while stating the Governor's objections. I'm one of those members of this legislature who passed many bills in my first term, and I think probably 90% of them have been vetoed for one reason or the other. And in some cases, I was successful in getting an override, in other cases, I... In other cases, I, I kind of felt that cooler heads prevailed and I, I didn't move to override because I understand the, uh, governor's objections. I'm very familiar with the current law, Mr. Speaker, which already the Attorney General said that the government of Guam is in a position to release these promissory notes and encourage the department administration to do so. And for one reason or the other, the administration has had serious reservations about doing that. I voted for the bill, Mr. Speaker, because I absolutely believe that this government must start making good faith effort to recognize that court ordered judgment, to recognize this as an existing debt, and to in one way or the other pay our retirees, uh, the amount of money that they're owed via this settlement. And I supported the bill. I understood fully that when you release these promissory notes, if you release even a hundred million of these notes, even ten percent of that, ten million, Mr. Speaker, if you have all these corporations who have bought these promissory notes from these, uh, individuals, if they were to redeem all of this at one time, then certainly that would exacerbate the cash flow that the government is currently experiencing, and I, I recognize that, and I still voted for the bill because that may have forced this governor and this government to recognize that obligation. I, I want to commend fully the, uh, sponsor of this bill, as so much so I commended the sponsor of the previous bill, which the legislature just, uh, overrode, uh, this afternoon. But in reading, uh, the comments made by Bank of America Securities and understanding that our consequences relative to this bill may have unintended consequences with respect to our financial positioning in the bond market, uh, causes me great concern, and I believe that it should cause great pause for this legislature. Uh, Bank of Amer- America's communicated that they would have to, if this bill were to become law, they would have to communicate this to the bond market, and certainly it'll jeopardize our posturing right now, and we could go from credit watch down to the downgrading of these bonds, and that would have a more devastating effect in our economy. We want to say wholeheartedly how much we recognizes the debt, so much so, Mr. Speaker, that we introduce Bill one sixty-eight to pay these retirees cash, to give them one hundred percent of what they're owed, as opposed to giving a promissory note where there's no guarantee how much these notes will be valued for. Uh, some say twenty cents on the dollar, some say thirty cents, some say eighty cents. And that's really going to be an arrangement between the individual who holds the note versus the, uh, interested buyer. And, and even, even those concerns, uh, still prevail my thinking into vote for the bill because I think everybody, uh, has their own ability to make these kinds of decisions. Uh, everybody has to make the decisions to whether or not, uh, they want to sell this note for even five cents on the dollar. That's certainly their prerogative, and that's something I'm not even concerned about, Mr. Speaker, because our people are intelligent. We have a community right now that has the capacity to make those decisions for themselves, but I think the overriding factor to not override this bill is our responsibility as members of this legislature to make sure that we don't exacerbate the, our present, uh, financial standing, uh, locally, and even the fact that if this were to pass, it's going to be communicated internationally. And sure, we would have all these promissory notes out. Sure, the co- corporations and the individuals will cash these notes in, and it may exacerbate the, uh, cash flow. We won't be able to deliver services to health, education, public safety. Now, if that's a local issue, Mr. Speaker, then that's something we'd have to address locally. But the fact that Bank of America, uh, has the fiduciary responsibility to communicate to the bond market that the legislature override, overwrote this bill, a- and, and it would affect our posturing right now in the bond market, uh, so much so that, uh, would, they would have to communicate that this is the most reckless and fiscally irresponsible thing to do. I would not lend my name to support something like this, and I beg, uh, the indulgence of the mover of this bill. I ask for apologies in advance, I ask for apologies from the, from the retirees themselves who stand to benefit from this paper note, and to just tell them that the fact that we introduced that bill yesterday, Bill one sixty-eight, which even you yourself may be open to having us address that in the upcoming Budget Act, I think we're so much more closer, we're closer to having realization of a hundred percent payment as opposed to all the, uh, pains and struggles we've had to take so far to have a resolution to this, uh, issue. So with all due respect, Mr. Speaker, I rise in opposition to, uh, overriding this veto. Thank you.
If there are no other speaker, Senator Pangolino, veto Bill number sixty-eight, you'll be closed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, Mr. Speaker, uh, number one, I rise in support of the override. But one of the things that I've always found, uh, in terms of working an issue is, I always say this is the way I think it should be done. This is the way I'm asking my colleagues to consider it be done, but I always know never to say, "This is how I'm going to do it," because it's not up to me. It's up to all members of this body who have a right to cast that one vote on every single issue that comes before this body that was given to them as the duly elected representatives of the people of Guam. It's not I, it's, this is how I believe we should do it, but it's never, this is how I'm going to do it. You know, Mr. Speaker, this is an alternative to resolving the issue of the cola payments. Every little bit helps, every step forward helps. Every idea brings another idea. This issue of doing it in this manner is really an outgrowth of an idea that the governor himself had. He wanted a structured settlement. A structured settlement in which we can issue these certificates or promissory notes back then that they can take to the banks. Isn't that kind of like what this looks like? Aren't they like, if they're not like, uh, calabash cousins, then they're at least kissing cousins? In terms of how close they are? But the governor last year thought that was okay. And then all of a sudden, when he gets something before him that resembles what he wants, he has a new objection, which to me has always been, does he really commit himself to making sure we do this? Or does he always throw out something there that he's hoping people won't accept? Or people will object to? Or people will take and work through and get eight members of this body, ten members of this body to agree to it so that we can move forward? Until he finds a new objection? I'm telling you, we will never, ever answer all the objections that the governor has with regards to cola because the only objection he has is paying it. That's it. Pure and simple. And the only reason why he started to pay it is he's got no choice. Is that he told the banks and certified under perjury that he's taking the money to pay it, and then he got caught not doing it. And that's why we, we're in here with a partial payment out there. So every time somebody presents something that looks like it may be workable, he throws out an objection, brings a consultant. It's a process that is available to anybody on the island that does business with the government of Guam. Even the governor at least attests to that. But it's something that was accepted by this body and presented to the governor. And when the governor found objections, it comes back here and we reconsider it. This is a reconsideration of our actions. I'm reconsidering, but my consideration remains the same. What is going to bring us closer to paying off the retirees? Is this in addition or a subtraction to that effort? I think it's an addition to that effort. So I'm going to cast a vote to add to that effort, not to take it away, not to reconsider. I understand the objections of the governor, but then that same objection is applicable to anybody else who does business with the government. Do we have a bill from the governor saying, "Let's remove the ability to avail anyone of a promissory note"? I haven't seen it. He says the retirees shouldn't be eligible for this, but the businessman down the street should be, or at least should continue to be. Why? Because one is a hundred and twenty-three and the other one's five hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, two million? Is it the magnitude? Okay, I can buy the question of magnitude. But are we talking about magnitude here or are we talking about fairness and equity? So if we're talking about promissory notes should only be under five hundred thousand, that's a completely different policy question. But it should, if it's retirees should not be able to be eligible and we should continue to have others eligible, that's a different policy question. And when I look at it from that policy question, I'm saying they should be equal. They should both have this opportunity. Now, if you wanted to ask me to reconsider a different one, I'll reconsider it, I'll consider it. But on this reconsideration, Mr. Speaker, I'm going to stand firm in my original vote on this bill and continue to support it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolino. If there are no other speakers, uh, with the mover of the motion, uh, could want, desire to close? Senator Luhan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, I want to, I want to thank my colleagues again for, um, speaking either for or against the, against the bill. And that's, again, democracy in, in action, that's, that's what's great about being in America and the formal government that we have, that we can agree to disagree and we can move on. Uh, with that, again, Mr. Speaker, I, I still stand the fact that, as the former, uh, speaker of, of this body had, had mentioned, it's already on the, it's already on the books. It's something that, that can be done at this point. The governor had said, "Hey, come with, with a structured agreement." They came before the courts, this is what they agreed upon, and as mentioned again earlier, that when, uh, when they came with a structured, uh, payment schedule and all that, and then we put it in form of, of, uh, of, of a bill for him to sign, what he said he would agree to, um, again, he came with, with objections. And again, the objections are, are none other than excuses, not, not wanting to pay the, uh, the cola recipients, the judgment that was handed down to them by, by, by the courts. Again, it's good for, for other people, it's good for companies that can redeem notes, but when it comes to the monomucus, it's not good because, uh, uh, they might bankrupt the government, uh, it might be fraud, they're, they're, you know, and things of that nature, all sorts of excuses not to pay a judgment out. And that's, again, the poorest excuse to, to, uh, you know, for, for giving a reason not to pay your debt. I mean, uh, I think I owe you five bucks, Mr. Speaker, from lunch the other day. If I write you a check, can, you know, I'd be careful because, you know, I mean, might, there might be a fraudulent check and things like, like that. But, Mr. Speaker, the process that we have, we have, uh, we have, uh, laws again in the books to protect against fraud, abuse and counterfeit and all that. And for the government to write a message such as this is a lame excuse not to pay your bill, something that, again, that he brought the cola recipients together, uh, and said, "Let's come up with a structured settlement," and they did, something allowed by law, again citing, uh, five GCA. Something is already in the books to be able, and the mechanism that will allow them to do that. And so with that, again, I like, uh, I thank, uh, my colleagues here, here today, uh, for, um, speaking up either for or against, uh, against, against the bill. And with that, again, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Luhan. Again, notwithstanding the objections of the governor, to place veto Bill number sixty-eight EC on the voting file for final action. If there are no objections? No objections? Motion carries. We're still in motions. If we're not, okay. Legislative concurrence? Senator, I think the next Senator, Esbel Don? Senator Esbel Don, I think you have some appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Mr. Speaker, uh, what I'd like to do in a legislative occurrence, uh, I, I see that the first four of the, uh, appointments to the boards under my committee are, 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 excuse me, are from the first four. So I, I, I move that the body, uh, concur on the appointments, uh, mentioned in, under the four.
I think they're five, actually.
Excuse me, and under the five, yes. Um... So I, I move that, that we adopt, uh, or... Okay, I, well, here, let me just, I move that we, uh, concur to the appointment of Mr. Casey Castro to serve as member of the Guam Council of the Arts and Humanities Board. Uh, I also move that, uh, uh, Mr. Matt Cruz to serve as a, uh, member of the Guam Council of the Arts and Humanities. I also move that, uh, this body accept Ms. Jolie Sipon Suba to serve as a member of the Council of Arts and Humanities. And I also move that Ms. Darian Moore to serve as, uh, member of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. And I, and I move that it be placed in the voting file.
Okay, and the motion to confirm and to place into the voting file. And no objection, motion carries. Thank you very much. Senator, um, Senior Senator, um, Pinko? Item six.
Can I, can I move on behalf of the, uh, of Senator Spodon to place, uh, the appointment of John A. Peterson to serve as member of the Guam Historic, Historic Preservation Review Board on the voting file?
No objection, okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Speaker, I, I stand here to, to make a motion to place the nomination of Mr. Monkey Mesa to serve as member of the OCAD Younger Commercial Board, Board of Directors, and to place his nomination on the voting file.
Okay, and if there's no objection, motion carries. Item seven, I, Senator Luhan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Aviation, Federal Affairs, Housing, Labor Housing, Banking and Insurance would like to place the, um, um, the, 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 the appointees that I was about to, to mention to be members of the AB Guam National Airport Authority Guam as, uh, Board of Directors with recommendations to do confirm and put in voting file, and they are, um, Mr. Joseph J. Harris, Ms. Lucy M. Alcorn, Mr. Marion S. Luhan, Mr. Frank S. Blas, Ms. Fay Valencia Ovalas, again for the, um, for members of the, uh, Board Directors, um, with recommendation, do confirm, uh, to place, be placed in the voting file.
No objection. Senator Luhan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the other Committee on Aviation, Federal Affairs, Labor Housing, Banking and Insurance would like to place, uh, the appointment of Mr. Gerard Prasostamo to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board Directors. The recommendation to confirm, be placed in the voting file.
There's no objection, motion carries. Uh, Senator Tenorio?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, just call for a couple of minutes recess, please.
Okay, objection. Have a couple of minutes recess.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, um, uh, as the reproduction staff has been backlogged with, uh, reproduction duties, uh, we will probably need to take a break at least until three o'clock, perhaps a little bit later, but we're maybe coming back at three o'clock or thereabouts. So I move that we recess until reproduction staff is completed, so probably about three o'clock.
Okay, so there's a mo- motion, no, to recess till three o'clock? Okay.
Move to, um, uh, to accept Bill number one forty-three EC as revised by the Committee on Finance, Taxation, Commerce and Economic Development for purposes of discussion.
No, no objection, motion carries. Senator Tenorio.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resolve to the committee the whole on the matter of Bill number one forty-three EC.
Okay, um, okay, then we will, shall we shall resolve to the committee the whole? Will take a couple of minutes for us to, uh, rearrange the furniture.
Uh, let me see, uh, bef- before I set the rules, um, the chairman of the committee, after I set the rules...
the Chairman of the Committee, after I set the rules, the Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means will give an overview of the budget itself. And then there'll be a presentation done by the, uh, staff on the revenue. And after that, uh, we'll go on with the session. The, listen to, to these rules, um, Judy? I'll be, just in case, okay, five minutes for question and answer, in other words. Oh, not you, oh, oh, yeah, even you. Uh... You know, question and answer, um, so if, if you, if you were to, uh, ask somebody a question, uh, the, the time that that person answers your question will include the five minutes. And, um, but what I will do is that, you know, just tell it to kinda wrap it up. Uh-huh. Uh, the question and answer, of course, rel- is, must be rel- relevant to the subject matter, uh, of the discussion. And the topic at hand is, of course, the issue. Uh, if measure amendment requires increased funding, uh, you identify the fund source. We'll proceed section by section on the bill. And these rules will be adhered to during the economic of the business on the floor, as at the Committee of the Whole. You want me to have a moment of prayers here, too? Ah, okay. Senator, Senator Calvo, you recognize? I'm sure, sure, okay.
Okay, my, my question is on the five-minute, uh, question or time. And you said that it would be eaten up by the response, can we request then that in, uh, that whoever we're asking questions of, that it be restricted to a yes or no, so then I, um, they won't use up too much of my time?
Okay, that Chairman of the Board taking note of that, yes.
I just wanna make sure, because I, I, I don't, if I wanted to be qualified, I would say yes then, but if I don't, then, and I only want a yes or no answer.
Okay, um...
Okay, thank you.
Senator Panglinen.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, with the rule that, uh, if you're going to, uh, provide an appropriation, then you have to identify the funding source.
Right.
Uh, I would also like then, so that whenever we come across an appropriation in the budget bill with a miscellaneous provision or whatever, that the committee identifies who put that provision in there. So, you know, for example, if we find an appropriation for sanctuary, uh, or for some other, uh, uh, project, a special project or a special appropriation, uh, for a special occasion or something, then I think if, if you're gonna require us, that if we're gonna introduce an amendment that has an appropriation tied, tied to a specific, uh, function, then the person that, then when we've come across the bill in, in any provision where there's an appropriation, then the committee should tell, tell us who put that in there, so that we can identify that person and, and try and, uh, you know, uh, work through them in, in terms of other bills. But I really think that's only fair, it's not fair that
That's reasonable.
we, we can put everything in there and then hide it in the committee.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Senator Espia.
Thank you very much, um, Mister Speaker, I appreciate the, uh, rules of engagement, I'm looking forward to it being followed through, um, consistently. I just wanna raise a concern, uh, in previous, uh, budget sessions, that when we're in the Committee the Whole, I understand that the process a little bit more lax, but there's still should be some decorum, uh, Mister Chairman, in that, and if a member has a floor, uh, I see a tendency of other members of legislature grabbing the mic and saying, oh, a point of information, or, or I have inform, new information, and then eventually the, the person who has the floor loses that somehow, and now if you can have the five-minute rule, we could conceivably see other members offering points of information, and then there goes our time. So I'm asking that every member of the legislature please hold off on, on, on points of, uh, uh, points of information is, is fine, because that's a rule that, that's a, an option that's exercised, but just, I, I think the Chair has been very lenient, uh, in past budget sessions to allow other members of legislature to just freely grab the mic and provide input, and, and it just loses, uh, the, the individual who's trying to make a point, it just loses that whole, uh, process. So I'm asking that we refrain from offering those kinds of
That's fair.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, Senator Palacios.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, it's good that we set out these ground rules, and, uh, I, I just wanna emphasize, we have to stick to it, whatever. And otherwise, then, we, it defeats the, whatever the rules we adopted, that, we have to stick with it. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Yeah, we've been playing with jungle rules for a long time. Senator Tenorio?
Uh, thank you, um, Mister Speaker, Mister Chairman. Um, I understand the precarious nature of being the Chair and, uh, sometimes the awkwardness of, um, calling the, uh, time. And, of course, I think our clerk has a, uh, a, a clock in the back that we can all hear, uh, so when that time comes, whether majority or minority, um, whoever has, uh, the five-minute timeframe comes up, please, uh, show the proper courtesy, you know, and not force the Chair to, to have to, um, ha- has that individual to close up his remarks. So that, that's my, uh, point. Thank you.
You can hear it ticking right now. Okay, uh, okay, Senator, um... Senator Calvo.
Thank you very much, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, uh, allow me an opportunity first to make a brief overview of the, uh, amended bill one forty-three and some of the major components to it as compared to the original bill one forty-three as submitted by the Governor. Again, when bill one forty-three was submitted to this legislature, uh, it had some major, major, uh, uh, pillars to, to the foundation of the bill. Number one, it was an, it was a, a spending plan for the government in its operations for F Y two thousand and eight, but it also contained a deficit elimination plan to deal with the, um, the long-term structural imbalance of the government of Guam and this debt that we have incurred over many years. With that component, there was also a borrowing initiative of up to two hundred and fifty million dollars, as well as a revenue enhancement proposal, uh, for raising taxes or lifting exemptions in order to fund not only the operations, but also to, to fund the deficit elimination plan and the borrowing authority. Uh, we've had, again, our hearings, uh, there has been also roundtable discussions in regards to certain proposals put forth in bill one forty-three. There were some major considerations that, that, that individuals, constituents and fellow legislators brought to our attention as we tried to craft this bill. Obviously, number one, and something that I'm sure you've all had some correspondence or, or, uh, uh, communication from the public, is the proposed taxed, uh, uh, increases or exemptions lifted, uh, for taxes in our, in currently that are being, uh, outlaid for the government of Guam. There were some major issues. The, um, the, I mean, a lot of the community came out and had some major concerns, as well as senators, that these revenue proposal, enhancement proposals could have a detrimental impact, uh, to, to the government, as well as in terms of collections, as well as to the community and the economy. There, uh, there is not contained within this substitute version a, um, in, any, any increase in, in the revenues as proposed by the administration. There is also another change, and it is regards to the borrowing authority. Um, many in this body, as well as some of the folks out there that have testified, are concerned about the borrowing of the government of Guam. Uh, there is a, uh, obviously, there's been a court case, there is been the, the answer to that court case, and contained within bill one forty-three as submitted by the Governor, there was a mechanism to allow for, uh, increased borrowing. Uh, the major component of it was for a recalculation of the, um, of the assessed, uh, value of real estate, uh, assets here in Guam. And with that increased, uh, percentage from thirty-five to seventy percent, it would allow for the government of Guam to go over the current status quo in its, in its ceiling, uh, in borrowing ceiling. What our bill tr- attempted to do was allow for borrowing, but also allow for borrowing within the, the, uh, constraints of our current, um, borrowing capacity as mandated by law. So again, that is why there's a major difference, rather than a two hundred and fifty million dollar borrowing authority, there is a ninety million dollar borrowing, uh, plan submitted in this budget that keeps within the, um, parameters of the current statute in, in regards to the debt ceiling of the government of Guam. Uh, obviously, there's advantages that, as, of that as well, because the debt service requirements, uh, for funding this borrowing plan, uh, are, are minimized as compared to the two hundred and fifty million dollar, uh, borrowing plan. Uh, there's also components within the, um, the borrowing plan that not only take into consideration the, the cola settlement and the, uh, payment amount of tax refunds, which are also included in the Governor's bill, but also components that deal with other issues such as the fourteen points in education and some of our court-ordered mandate, and whether it's a consent decree or, or a, an injunction. So there is some monies that are used in the, in the ninety million borrowing authority, also for education, as well as for mental health and dysid, as well as D, uh, D P W. Um... The other component here, of course, is appropriation for government operations. Obviously, with, with the bill put forward to you, there is going to be a slight reduction in government spending. We currently have a four hundred and ninety-six million dollar authorization, uh, appropriation for spending. Um, in this budget that is proposed to, to members of the body, there is a slight decrease. We have a four hundred and eighty-nine million dollar, uh, spending, uh, appropriation authority. Uh, there's been a lot of work done by the members of the Office, O- Office of Finance and Budget in, in, in coordination with different government agencies. Uh, there's been an understanding that we also have to look at within our, to work within our means. We would like to give everybody what they want, but if we gave everybody what they want, and that includes, again, the Guam Public School System with their two hundred and seventy-five million dollar budget request, it, it, it was just too large a gap to work with. Uh, we feel that appropriations that are given for, for government services are adequate. We feel that it, 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 uh, takes into account the priority areas of education, health and public safety, but it also, it recognizes that the limitations of the government of Guam. So in a nutshell, this is what bill one forty-three as amended by the Committee, uh, uh, proposes. I would request from my, from my, uh, my colleagues to allow an opportunity for, uh, our, um, the members of my Office of Finance and Budget to make a presentation, um, in, in regards to the revenues, uh, that we anticipate coming into this government and that are earmarked, uh, in this, uh, budget bill. Thank you very much, Mister Chairman.
Do you have the staff here?
A point of order, Mister Chairman? I just wanna ask if the, um, Governor's, uh, financial repres- team are gonna be part of this Committee the whole process?
I don't know.
And should we start without them?
Uh, we, we, we need to have the staff of, uh, Senator Calvo first.
As well as the staff of the, uh, I could see the acting BBMR Director, Mister Chairman. I think for sake of expediency, it'd be nice if they just join us from the very beginning.
Your, your point of order is not well taken, Senator Espia, but we can invite her in, because that's not point of order.
Then it's a request. Then it's a request, Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Again, Mister Chairman, uh, BBMR and their staff are here. The thing is, we have to understand that this bill, as amended by this Committee, was, was actually the, you know, it, it is the, the fruits, the fruition of work done by the Office of Finance and Budget and the Committee. I think it's important that we allow for, uh, presentation by the, um, by the Office of Finance and Budget in, in the, into the particulars of, of this particular bill. And then, of course, there, I have no problem with allowing BBMR in here to testify, but again, when it comes to this bill, it is obviously, uh, again, a work of the legislature and that, and that, again, it, when it comes to, to many specifics of the bill, it, I, I, I think those that are best equipped to answer those questions would be the Office of Finance and Budget.
Yeah, okay, you may invite, uh, the, uh, Budget Director here? Do you? You have, uh, Bernie Artero, the, um, Chief Financial Analyst, right? Ber- Bernie, uh, Artero is the Director of O F B? And to, to her side is Abigail Ruiz? Rizus? Why? Well, I mean, my middle name. Thanks.
Yeah, Mister Chair, uh, again, I, we have Bertha Duñez here present, but I think, again, for, for expediency's sake and efficiency's sake, I would request from the body also allowing the presentation to occur, and then with, and with the completion of the presentation, and again, that would be the best time if they have questions or comments from
Then we will have the, uh, general, general questions. Her person.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we'll we'll recess about five minutes for the, uh, thing to be set up.
Is the mics on?
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, I have a
Can you, can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you, now you could hear me, I, I, I have a point of order. Are we gonna begin this with, with the Sergeant-at-Arms administering the oath pursuant to law?
Oh, why not?
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Go ahead. Sergeant at arm? Sergeant at arm? Uh, will you, um, just warn everybody in? Maybe every face that you see up here? Let's please, uh, all of you guys. Thank you. Now, at the expense of the housekeeping, we can continue on. Yeah, Bernie, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Senators. I have with me my staff who, um, as a team developed this model. Uh, we worked, um, with members of the administration in, uh, developing the base, the base forecasting model, and then we had our staff, uh, used information and data collected from the Department of Administration, BBMR, Revenue and Tax, uh, as well as other references, reference documents we got from other state governments. Uh, our model is really based on projecting the aggregate revenue for, uh, a fiscal year uh, as compared to the traditional, what we call the traditional BBMR model. Uh, we've also formulated that model to, um, to show the differences, and we and we have a slide-by-side comparison. Uh the result of both models are are pretty close with a variance of uh almost one percent. It's a six million dollar variance. It's very close. The differences will be in the allocation of the aggregate amount. It will be uh the variances actually occurs in the different tax categories. Again, because our model basis, its basis is uh an aggregate revenue total as opposed to the individual tax categories. Uh before I go to our go into our presentation, I'd like to thank uh the members of the administration for their assistance and for providing information to help us build this model. Uh we've worked very closely with BBMR. Again, we've used their tracking model um slash forecasting. Uh we took a look at that um and as you may, some of you may recall, in the fiscal year oh six and oh seven, we uh recommended that the legislature adopt the revenue forecast presented by BBMR. Uh in our model, we estimated a range and their figures came within that range. Uh this year, because of tax exempt, there's several tax uh revenue enhancements that are in the bill that um we felt it was best that we go ahead and present our model, which, again, we did not disclose for almost two years because we it is a new model and our intent was to test the model before actual implementation. And for the two years that we've used it, it's it's been pretty consistent in the projections of revenues. And what I'd like to do, before we go any further, I'd like to do introduce Henry Henry Cruz. He's our economist. We have Abigail Reyes, and she is our senior uh budget analyst. And we have Lester Paulson, who is our financial analyst. Um so now, what I again, to kind of speed this through, what I'll show you is uh the formula or the statistical equation that we've used to uh forecast our revenues, and then I can uh take you into the details of it if if you're interested in that. So let me begin with. Before, I would also like to add that um in attempting to develop this model, we looked at several states, and as you can see in this chart, there's maybe six different models or statistical equations that states use uh commonly use for forecasting these uh tax categories. The reason we didn't go, we didn't choose this route is because of our lack of information um as would have been determined by a gross island product, which uh we're hoping that the government of Guam will be able to produce um shortly. And in the absence of a GDP, uh we were forced to come up with uh some kind of a formula that best depicts how the economy would move and how revenues will move for the following year. Our model uses key variables, and and before this was even determined, we used a ten-year weighted average to predict the growth of these of several tax categories, and we chose uh individual income tax withholding business privilege tax and corporate income because it best fit the the curve, right, the growth of our revenue collections. And they're also the largest tax categories um in our revenue base. Uh the what you see peripheral variables, those are what we call our P E Vs, um prevailing economic variables. Uh they include employment. We took a look at the employment and unemployment rates, uh the activities in construction, in tourism, and in government outlets and military activities anticipated. Uh and with that, that with that, we determined that uh after projecting or forecasting a base number based on the key variables above, we added on these um we added on these new or correct, these infusions into the economy that are not picked up in 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 uh the model that we used to develop a base. So these are new activities we anticipate for the following fiscal year. As we go along, you um we have not updated the model. I've updated the worksheets to pro- to project the oh eight numbers. However, uh this model was developed in oh s- late oh five, and so you see fiscal years that have not been updated. But I just wanted to take you through the process. The basis for our for the basis for our statistical um formulation is based on this formula. Using this, we were able to determine, we were able to determine uh a weighted average, which is which is a key component of our model. And uh the results of that are, for example, for example, the corporate income tax, uh how this how the weighted average was determined uh used in corporate income tax, uh one of the major tax categories, was we took uh we used years nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand. This year, we used two thousand and seven, and we dropped the highs and the lows. Uh we got the real value of each tax category and uh divided that or got the average of the of that tax category. We got the statistical weight using a universe of that year's total general fund revi- or corporate income. I'm sorry, general fund revenues. Anomalies? We don't consider it anomalies, right? Statistical smoothing. Okay, so um again, this is just one example. Uh we took the corporate income tax and determined that the weight for that, the average weight was point one two seven. To project to the full to project a full fiscal year's uh revenue level for that category, we divided that into the average or composite real value, which is the fifty-three. We did that for all four tax categories. And as a result, as a result, you have sorry, that just gives you what it turns out to be. You have a range of between four twenty-three, from four seventeen to four twenty-three, just for that tax. I'm sorry, for that oh-six forecast, correct. Uh our model.
The uh so the rebate uh impact would be shown in the collection reports with uh D O A. So we use the collection report, so it's factored in there.
Um and then also, you may be concerned about anomalies in certain fiscal years. We smoothed those numbers and as best we could with information from the Department of Administration. Uh when you look at the mean, which is I just want to walk you through the process because this will probably be confusing. This is not the forecast for oh eight. This is the forecast for oh seven. To this, we add prevailing uh economic variables. But this is just the process. Just want you to understand that that's what we did. Um and we also took a look at another model, which we didn't use because it cost, it was um in our estimations uh too high, the estimates turned out to be too high. We also formulated the traditional model that um forecasting model that the Bureau of Budget uses um somewhere here. And uh based on that, we came up with a comparison of the two two uh results. And like I said, it came up pretty close. What you saw, that four twenty-one that you saw in this fiscal year, we did a um it's the first time we did we've done this. We projected what we anticipated economic growth for the for the ensuing fiscal year. We projected that across the four major tax categories. For example, under construction, and we can get into the details later, we estimate for oh seven that there would be a six million dollar economic impact uh on tax revenues, correct, based on military construction. And we took uh we we applied that across the board using a percentage that we got from Department of Revenue Tax, from revenue on taxation. Uh and so we did that for all the tax categories, uh I'm sorry, for all the economic indicators that you see here. To this, we added our reven- our base number. There it is. There's the four twenty-one that you saw. We instead of taking a high and a low or with the estimates, we just took the the mean, which gave us a base of four twenty-one. To that, we added the thirty-six million that you saw in in economic variables, which gave us a revenue projection of four fifty-seven. And when we um we saw the administration's number, we went ahead and adopted that because it did fall within our in within our range. That's the process, and there's a whole bunch of information here that maybe we can look at later, but that's it. I'd like to show you now uh the comparison between the BBMR's revenue figures as well as um OFBs that's in the budget file. If you see if you look at the first, I'm sorry, the the first column gives you the the general fund categories, revenue categories. The second column is the um projections that are in Bill one forty-nine. And you'll see the governor's bill estimates on the next column and the variances. Again, I I like to remind you that our model projects the aggregate, which is the four eighty-nine. In order to apply it to the individual tax categories, we had to use um weighted statistical weights, statistical weights to apply it to individual tax categories. And and there you'll see the differences between BBMR and OFB numbers. But the bottom line, which uh we were concerned about, because that's where the appropriations are made from and made against, expenditures are made against, it's uh you as you can see, it's pretty close. And uh sir. N- uh no, we actually took those out, and that's why they're it OFBs, I'm sorry, BBMR's number is at the four eighty-five. We took out the thirty million in tax exemptions, uh and then we I can go through that if you want me to. Okay. That shows you the the variances, and when we get to uh how we make up the difference to the five oh four, the administration's number, I I call it their base, and I I I'm not sure what they wanna call it. Uh I call it their base of four eighty-five. How they came up to the five oh four is they added the tax exemptions, and they also subtracted an amount for the uh E I T C settlement to come up with the five oh four. Uh a- again, our numbers did not include that, and hence the four eighty-nine point eight level. I that's it in a nutshell.
Can I ask a real quick question? When you talk about weighted numbers, you're talking about, uh for example, the point one two seven. Uh that's your confidence uh level? Or is that based on regression analysis? Henry? Wh- where do you you establish your?
No, it's not based on regression.
Your weighted is then your mean.
Weighted average, statistically over ten years.
Yeah, your your weighted is then the mean, where you drop the high and the low, and you you establish a mean.
That's correct.
That that is what you refer to as weighted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um on the slide presentation, it's very difficult to see from this distance. And I was talking to the chairman, and I don't think there's any objection to getting those um uh maybe that uh presentation in a printed form so that we can try to look at it with greater detail and clarity.
Okay.
S- sort it. Uh Senator Spishu.
Thank you very much, um OFB, for your presentation. I wanna say that it's a good start because at least we have a check and balance to what the administration provided, and I'm so far encouraged uh by this process. I I just wanna ask, um you keep referencing four eighty-five uh that the administration's numbers, but in Bill one forty-three, it's actually a four hundred and seventy-three million dollars. Has that four eighty-five number, and I understand how they got theirs because of the eleven point four million dollar uh set aside for the E I T C uh court claim, but was there any was that number officially revised by the administration? Because you talk about a one percent variance right now, based on the four hundred and seventy-three million dollar number. It's more like a three percent variance, and I just wanted to get information.
Okay, the in in looking at what they presented during the hearing, their base number was four fifty-five point five million, and then they added on, they added on the um additional child tax credit of eight million, the projected G R T Dave Santos amendment of seven million, projected G R T uh amendment of three point eight, and projected fees of D R T of five million. If you add those numbers to the four fifty-five, you get the four seventy-four.
Yeah, I understand that, but how did you get to the four eighty-five?
To get to the four eighty-five, you add the four seventy-four plus the
The E I T C set aside, right?
Yes, correct.
Has that has that uh revised revenue projection been officially communicated to OFB by the administration?
No, this is not a revised estimate from them. It's how they came up to the five oh four. Uh we're not saying that the four eighty-five is their revised revenues. We're showing that that's how we compare the base uh to compare to our numbers. We didn't take in, I'm sorry, our model already incorporated the the uh repeal what they uh what they call anomalies on the, for example, the tax exemptions. It's already included.
Because just from what I could um from my speed reading here, uh this Bill one forty-three does not at this revenue category set aside the eleven point four million dollars that the administration is requesting in Bill one forty-three for the E I T C settlement.
We had a difference of of opinion on how to treat the eleven million. What the administration did was they backed that out as a reserve uh on the against the They backed it out against the reserve, right? Uh similar to the tax refund reserve, but I'm I'm saying that the reserve for tax refunds and E I T C are from current revenues for the current uh reserve requirements for for tax refunds and E I T C. This payment of the E I T C is more an appropriation for the judgment or for the settlement.
And so if you have a difference of opinion on how to capture that eleven point four million, if the administration's not officially agreed to that opinion, then I think the variance should be three percent and not one percent. And and they would have an opportunity to to qu- come up with their um presentation, I'm sure, but for the sake of uh argument, uh their their revenue projection, as as with all the fees and and the anomalies, it's four hundred and seventy-three million dollars. Do you have the actual revenue collections on departmental charges? Because that's an Because that's an area where I've been extremely concerned and believe that it's uh overstated, and in the interest of time, uh Bill one forty-three has substituted with the um section thirty money, the federal sources. Bill one forty-three is forty-six million, and and the substituted version here is one point four million, the difference of one, four point one million. Uh, how did that, any sh- doesn't the information come from the administration, from revenue tax, on what they believe they could realistically uh project to have this uh as a revenue source for the upcoming fiscal year? And we don't need to get into why there's a significant uh maybe twelve or thirteen million dollar difference because of the overages, we know about that. But, Miss, Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering, uh, we understand the presentation made by BBMR, but uh some of these trackings really come from the front office in terms of, especially in this category, you're already talking so many...
Again, as I explained earlier, in developing a projection, we looked at the, we were, our model projects the aggregate revenue base. Uh, and in applying to, in applying figures to the different revenue categories, we used uh, again, we had our method to u- uh which we chose to use was based on such a statistical weight of these categories ag- against the total revenue pot. Uh, there will be differences in the actual allocation.
Y- y- I agree, I understand, even for federal sources?
We went ahead and you, again, we used uh, it's it's, how do you say? When we start changing uh our method to accommodate certain certain tax categories, it doesn't work for our model. So, we went ahead and used uh uh, again, the approach that we did, the statistical weighting.
Mr. Chairman, would the administration have an opportunity to to defend uh their revenue projection? Be, not ch- okay, so we'll we'll get to that, I I just wanna point out that uh...
We just wanted the O B to actually uh present what we got here, and then later on, we can uh start the question and answer.
And I just wanna point out that the um, I want to uh recognize as well that the Office of Finance and Budget recognizes four hundred thirty-four million dollars, the baseline tracking, and that's basically what we've been tracking as a neighborhood.
No, I didn't say that, that's...
Well, it's right here in your, in your presentation, page two, total taxes, four thirty-four.
What is he looking at?
And and then there's been some announcements made that O B has consistently been tracking in the four hundred fifty million dollar neighborhood. This um...
Uh, what you're looking at is tot- what you're looking at is the total taxes alone and not the other revenue categories in the general fund to give you the four eighty-nine?
Absolutely, and just for purposes of clarity, um, we've been recommending that we, when we do the revenue projections, we 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 qualify that number of baseline tracking versus a tracking with the additional increases in fees. And then the one forty-three had the increases in uh revenue enhancements, and so... But as a baseline tracking, it's four thirty-four?
Uh, no. Our baseline tracking is four twenty, four twenty-four, and then we added on the economic variables to come up to the four eighty-nine.
Okay, but that, but you're still in that neighborhood of four twenty, four thirty, where 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 we believe that that's what our revenue...
No, it's, I'm sorry, it's not base tracking, it was our base uh revenue, it was our revenue base, wasn't track, based on tracking, baseline, yeah.
Okay, we're just talking about the model, right, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, yeah. Any other uh small questions regarding the presentation though? Huh? Okay, go ahead, let me miss that. Anyway.
There's a oversight hearing tomorrow, I believe.
Okay. Before we get into the budget, okay, um, I want you to look at the budget as this presented right now. We have hundred and uh thirteen pages plus Attachment B, and Attachment Bs, B one, and Attachments, that's it. Huh? Where's the Attachment A? Yeah, go ahead.
Attachment A refers to the uh bond indenture for the proposed bond financing, and if you read the language, um, the terms and conditions need to be set forth uh in an approval first by the legislature before an uh an indenture which needs to m- uh mirror the conditions under which the financing was approved, is developed, and then ordinarily, it's re-presented to the legislature for um review and ultimate approval. So, it's like a placeholder for right now.
Okay, uh, so please make a correction that your Attachment B is a Attachment A. No? Uh, okay, okay, to be forthcoming, Attachment A would be there, but we do have page one to one thirteen. Okay, and so what we would do is that by tomorrow morning, by nine o'clock in the morning, we will be here, and we will start with chapter one on the general provision and the uh revenues. Okay, so we recess until tomorrow night.